Good evening and welcome everyone to tonight's Yountville Town Council meeting. We are just now coming out of a closed session meeting and we do have reportable action to announce from that closed session. Town Attorney?
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the Town Council. The record should reflect that the Town Council, with all five members being present, convened for closed session. The two items were discussed, the public employee performance evaluation of the Town Attorney and the conference with legal counsel existing litigation. Let me first report on item 2B, under conference with legal counsel existing litigation. The Town Council received a briefing from the Town Attorney. There was no final reportable action taken on that matter and there's nothing further to report. Concerning item A, public employee performance evaluation, the Town Council has directed the Town Manager to prepare and issue a request for proposals for legal services. That is requested that matter be brought back to the Town Council for January 6th. That further a ad hoc committee has been designated of Councilmember Mueller and Mayor Dunbar to assist and facilitate the review of that RFP and that is the reportable action from closed session.
Thank you very much. So with that, I will adjourn closed session and convene our regular council meeting and we will begin with roll call, please.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Mueller?
Here.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chilton?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next, we will go to canvas election results from the November 4th, 2014 election. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Dunbar, Council. Briefly, tonight's action is to certify the election results for the most recent municipal election. The results of the Yountville election, as reported by Napa County assessor and voter registrar, John Tudor, indicates that there were 1,275 participants in the election in the campaign for mayor. John Dunbar was the winner with 1,089 votes. In the campaign for council seats, there were three candidates running for two council seats. Highest vote getter was Richard Hall with 804. Marita Dornbecker was second with 779 and both of those will be retained and become seating council members. Jerome Gigliotti was the third candidate with 309 votes. There was also an appropriation measure, the GAN limit, measure Q, which authorizes and allows the town to fully utilize the proceeds of our various TOT and sales tax. And that passed with 982 votes in favor and 186 votes opposed. So the action before you tonight that they're recommending is to adopt Resolution Number 3216-14, reciting the fact of the consolidated general municipal election held November 4, 2014, and declaring the result in such other matters as provided by state law.
Thank you very much. Is there any council questions about that report? Seeing none, I will actually ask for a motion to accept the results from Councilmember Hall.
Okay. I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 3216-14, reciting the fact of the consolidated general municipal election held on November 4, 2014, declaring the result in such other matters as provided by law.
Second.
You beat Councilmember Dornbecker to the second.
That's all right.
Do you want to rescind your second?
No, 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 no.
Councilmember Dornbecker, would you like to second that?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? No. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. So, yeah, you were a little too quick for us on that one, Councilmember Mueller. Next up, administration of the oath of office and present certificate of election.
Okay. We're going to need a little help from everybody, including the crowd, but while we do this, we will be administering the oath of office for the mayor and then each of the individual council members. And the good news for everybody is then, after the photos and everything, we will have a short break for refreshments.
Yeah, and I believe the council will step down from the dais so that each of the three of us will receive the oath.
That is correct. And assisting us with the oath of office tonight will be Deputy Clerk, Management Analyst, Judy-- Julie, where did Julie? Julie Baldia, and we appreciate that. The first office that will be administering the oath is for John Dunbar, Mayor, and joining him is his wife, Robin.
Okay.
Okay. You could please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Repeat, say your name after "I." So, "I"
"I, John F. Dunbar."
"Do solemnly swear"
"Do solemnly swear"
"That I will support and defend"
"That I will support and defend"
"The Constitution of the United States"
"The Constitution of the United States"
"And the Constitution of the State of California"
"The Constitution of the State of California"
"Against all enemies"
"Against all enemies"
"Foreign and domestic"
"Foreign and domestic"
"That I will bear true faith and allegiance"
"That I will bear true faith and allegiance"
"To the Constitution of the United States"
"To the Constitution of the United States"
"The Constitution of the State of California"
"And the Constitution of the State of California"
"That I take this obligation freely"
"That I take this obligation freely"
"Without any mental reservation"
"Without any mental reservation"
"Or purpose of evasion"
"Or purpose of evasion"
"And that I will well and faithfully"
"And I will well and faithfully"
"Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter"
"Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter"
"Congratulations."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll invite Councilmember Hall. If you'll take this. I'll put it over here.
If my kids were here, maybe.
Okay. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me using your name after "I."
"I"
"I, Richard Hall"
"Do solemnly swear"
"Do solemnly swear"
"That I will support and defend"
"That I will support and defend"
"The Constitution of the United States"
"The Constitution of the United States"
"And the Constitution of the State of California"
"And the Constitution of the State of California"
"Against all enemies"
"Against all enemies"
"Foreign and domestic"
"Foreign and domestic"
"That I will bear true faith and allegiance"
"That I will bear true faith and allegiance"
"To the Constitution of the United States"
"To the Constitution of the United States"
"And the Constitution of the State of California"
"And the Constitution of the State of California"
"Against all enemies"
"Against all enemies"
"Foreign and domestic"
"Foreign and domestic"
"That I will bear true faith and allegiance"
"That I will bear true faith and allegiance"
"To the Constitution of the United States"
"To the Constitution of the United States"
"And the Constitution of the State of California"
"And the Constitution of the State of California"
"That I take this obligation freely"
"That I take this obligation freely"
"Without any mental reservation"
"Without any mental reservation"
"Or purpose of evasion"
"Or purpose of evasion"
"And that I will well and faithfully"
"And that I will well and faithfully"
"Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter"
"Discharge the duties upon which I am to enter"
"Congratulations." Please raise your right hand and repeat after me using your name after "I." So, "I"
"I, Marita Dornbecker"
"Do solemnly swear"
"Do solemnly swear"
"That I will support and defend"
"That I will support and defend"
"The Constitution of the United States"
"The Constitution of the United States"
"And the Constitution of the State of California"
"And the Constitution of the State of California"
"Against all enemies"
"Against all enemies"
"Foreign and domestic"
"Foreign and domestic"
"That I will bear true faith and allegiance"
"That I will bear true faith and allegiance"
"To the Constitution of the United States"
"To the Constitution of the United States"
"And the Constitution of the State of California"
"And the Constitution of the State of California"
"That I take this obligation freely"
"That I take this obligation freely"
"Without any mental reservation"
"Without any mental reservations"
"Or purpose of evasion"
"Or purpose of evasion"
"And that I will well and faithfully"
"And that I will well and faithfully"
"Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter"
"Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter"
"Congratulations."
And at this time, we will have a brief 10-minute recess to allow for a reception
Thank you. On behalf of Councilmember Dornbecker and Councilmember Hall and myself, thanks for all of you that are here to help recognize and celebrate our new terms. So we're looking forward to working together as a really solid unit. I know many of you know all of us and know that we've really, I think, done a very nice job working well together. So congratulations to my fellow council members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And to you.
Thank you. Next order of business is to appoint the Vice Mayor to the Town Council. Was there any staff report, Town Manager, that you wanted to give?
Yes. Just briefly, Municipal Code Chapter 2.04 and 040 provide for the method of selecting and a requirement that there be an appointment of a Vice Mayor. The Vice Mayor requires a selection or appointment vote by the council body and it's a two-year term that would serve as Vice Mayor during the duration of the 2014-16 Town Council.
Thank you very much. I'll invite any members of the council for discussion. I think I will start out by saying I've been very pleased and satisfied with Vice Mayor Chilton's capacity and role as Vice Mayor and I would recommend that he continue on as Vice Mayor, but I want to open it up to the rest of the council for consideration.
I'll move to approve Vice Mayor Chilton to serve as Vice Mayor again with cookie in my mouth.
Second?
Really, I didn't know you. Yeah, right.
I'm fluent with cookie.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second Councilmember Mueller, to reappoint Vice Mayor Chilton to that role for the next term. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposition. Congratulations.
My thanks to the council for the continued appointment.
You don't have to move your chair or anything. Okay, next item. Adoption of tonight's agenda. It kind of feels like we've gotten through half of it already, but are there any corrections, changes, or action on the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda or adopt the agenda, pardon me.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next proclamation, actually more of an introduction to our Napa County Fire Chief, Barry Bierman. Welcome. Many of us already know you well, but welcome back in your new capacity.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Dunbar and council members. My name's Barry Bierman. For those of you who don't know, I am the new Napa County Fire Chief and just looking forward to the opportunity to serve as the Fire Chief here in Napa County and the Town of Yountville's Fire Chief as well. I was a fire captain here for almost nine years at the Yountville Fire Station and Yountville has always had a special place in my career and I look forward to still staying around here. I've been a battalion chief for the last eight years, six years up in San Alina and then two years down here in Napa before this assignment, so I know the area fairly well and a lot of the phases here are familiar and look forward to coming back and working with everyone.
Well, thank you. It's good to have you back close by and we've had a very, very productive, strong working relationship with Cal Fire and the Sheriff's Department. So welcome and glad to have you onboard.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I always want to acknowledge our armed public safety officers when they're here. Public comment on matters not listed on tonight's agenda. Now would be the time if anyone has something they'd like to say that's not agendized. Mr. Gigliotti, please. You might have to lower that microphone a little bit from the chief. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor Dunbar, council members, citizens of Yountville. First, I'd like to congratulate Mayor Dunbar and council members, Dornbecker and Hall, in their election. I am certain that you will continue to represent all of the residents of Yountville very well, so thank you. I want to bring to the attention of the council a concern that we have up at the Veterans Home and that is that for three and a half months, we had no eating utensils to use in the mess hall. We used paper plates, plastic utensils, and styrofoam cups. And this was because a carousel that brings the tray from the dining hall to the back kitchen was inoperative. And the concern of mine was why did it take three and a half months to repair that? I wrote to Senator Wolk and Assemblymember Yamada and received a reply from Assemblymember Yamada, and if I may distribute it?
If you could actually give it to our clerk and she will distribute it, that would be fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Assemblymember Yamada was told that there was no practical means of taking utensils and plates from the dining hall to the back kitchen. They did, however, transport the trays on four-wheel carts and I worked in food services before my service in the Army, after my service in the Army, and while I was serving in the Army. And I know very well that you can transport cups and glasses and utensils and plates in a bussing tray. I'm sure all of you have seen that done in restaurants. So whoever told that to Assemblymember Yamada was lying to them. My concern now, I want to bring to the council, is that since the carousel was repaired, we are still receiving our meals, two meals out of three every day with paper plates, styrofoam cups, and plastic utensils.
Why don't you just hold on to those down there? They're going to be a little bit cumbersome for us up at the dais, but if you have them to present, we'll get them from you after. How's that?
I have five.
I believe you.
One for each of you.
If you could keep them in the box and present them to staff, we can get to those after the meeting.
Terrific. If there's any influence or any way that the town has of communicating with the Sacramento, the legislature, or the California Department of Veterans Affairs to remedy the fact that we're still continuing to eat off of paper plates for two out of three meals, I would sincerely appreciate any efforts you can make on our behalf. It's not a penitentiary. They can trust us with sharp objects. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just for folks that are not familiar with our process, when we have an item that's brought to us as public comment, we're not allowed to discuss it since it's not on our agenda, but we will take that matter into consideration and we've received that information from you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public like to speak on an item that's not agendized tonight? Seeing no others, we will move ahead to our consent calendar. We have five items on that consent calendar. Is there action to be had on the consent calendar?
I'll make a
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar, items A through E.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up, this should be interesting. We are about to have a presentation, a Regis GIS overview.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As many of you know, the town has embarked on a innovative and unique partnership with the city of Rancho Cucamonga, which is one of the leading experts in the use of geographical information system technology. And we've embarked on a partnership and today, we're here to show you a little bit about what I'd like to say, where your money has been going. And we're about, we're kind of excited. The team now, our team, is starting to be able to start using the information. And I want to acknowledge a few folks. First, Ingrid Bruce with the city of Rancho Cucamonga is a project lead. With her is Solomon Namuku. And I also want to acknowledge three of our employees who'll be helping to make today's presentation, one of which is home very sick, and that's Jacob Solis, who has been instrumental in our implementation team. And then joining tonight and participating in the presentation will be our utility supervisor, Don Moore, and our water service worker, who's also on a special assignment during the vacancy of our public work supervisor, Nick Hickman. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ingrid and I'm kind of looking forward to seeing where we're going as well.
Welcome.
Thank you, City Town Manager, Mr. Mayor, members of the Town Council. My name is Ingrid Bruce and I am excited to be here. Your town is absolutely beautiful and any excuse to come here is just welcome. The food is even great, even better, so. Tonight with me is my senior GIS analyst, Solomon Namako, and he's going to be doing most of the talking during the presentation. I will be quiet. As the Town Manager said, yes, Jacob was going to start off the presentation, but with him being sick, we will have Solomon start the presentation and show you some of what Jacob does when he's here at the office. Jacob was with us for a week, a couple of weeks ago, and for some training. So he had some one-on-one training with Solomon and was really excited about it, brain dead by Thursday, but he was really excited about it. And following what Solomon will show you will be, Nick will come up second and he will show you how he's been using the information in the field, using his iPad, and then he'll be followed by Don Moore. And they will show you actually what they've been doing. Once that's completed, Solomon will start again and this way we will show you some other features that we have picked up in the field when we were up here, when we first came up here. He will show you some other features we have picked up and also give you a little bit of insight into how we're going to be able to hook the office staff when they get a complaint or something and they're able to log it in and Nick and/or Don could actually see it in the field when there is a request. So he will show you a little bit of that. He'll show you a little bit of the story map that we're going to develop for you. Just kind of whet in your appetite for what's to come and just keep in mind that it's not here yet, but it's something that will be coming. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. So I will show a little bit of what Nick, what Jacob's role is going to be. So Jacob is, what we are trying to do with Jacob is to clone him like me. So you'll have your own in-house, in-house GIS person who will manage all the assets that we have collected. So the town has completely moved all the assets that you can think about into the GIS environment and with that means that we need to have somebody who understands the science behind to make the guy's job very easy or to be able to take an idea from any member and be able to translate it in a way that can be easy to use on the iPad, on the browser, and that is what Jacob has been working on. So I will show more of what Jacob is doing. Our little concern was to be able to show the iPad on the screen, but on the backend of all the layers you see, somebody has to do the technical stuff on the backend and that is what Jacob is being trained to do, to make. And then when I come back again, I'll show some of the applications that he's been able to build that is ready to go somewhere public to show like road, which road can be worked on, which roads cannot be touched, you know, so you don't have the utility guys coming in and just digging, just as you guys finish surfacing the road. So those are some of the applications that he key would do on the backend and also be able to support the field guys with any GIS information. So when it's all said and done, Jacob will be a GIS analyst for the town, which is very he to manage all the assets. So I'll jump back to Nick to do his demo on the iPads and then when I come back, I'll actually show some of the backend offers on that. So with that, Nick?
Thank you very much. So as was stated before by Steve and Ingrid, we are extremely excited with this information and this system. In the field, I've been using it for about two to three months now and things are being added almost every day, different things. What I was looking forward to showing you this evening is just some of the things that I'm able to use it for in the water system and also what, we've also downloaded all of our street signs and traffic signs and have street sign and traffic signs categories that Jake's also using in the field already. So I was just going to kind of do a quick overview of how we're using it at this point. Right now, you can see that we have Town Hall pulled up here and we have the intersections of Fennel and Yount. And I can click on this little browser at the very bottom of the screen and it actually brings up my actual GIS location and it'll bring me right back to us in just a moment.
It's trying to find its way.
Up there in the star.
There you go.
And so now the GIS has located me at Town Hall. And so if I'm out in the field and I'm on the end of Lincoln Street and I'm looking at a valve, I can pull myself up and actually drag myself to an item that I'm using. For example, this is a fire hydrant right out in front by the driveway of Town Hall. And I can click on that item and it tells me that it's a water fire hydrant. It tells me the date that the information was uploaded. And then at the bottom here, you can see I went out in the field to do an inspection on the hydrant and to do some work on the hydrant and I'm able to take a photo of the hydrant location to give an idea if we ever have to go back and work on the hydrant again. The picture's there, shows you exactly what we're working on. This picture isn't really relevant to give me much information. However, if we're out in the field doing a repair underground, we're replacing a valve, I can take a picture of the old valve that we're replacing. I can take a picture of the old valve that we're replacing, pull it out of the ground, take a picture of the new valve being installed. We'll have pictures from now on of any work done underground, and we'll have relevant photos of what was done. And we're also able to go back in and enter any information about that item, whether it's an eight-inch valve, a 10-inch valve, if it's made by Mueller, if it's made by another company. All that information will now be stored in this data, and if we're called to a location to do any work on something, I have all that information before I ever have to go to the site. So rather than go out to the site, assess the situation, go back to the yard and get parts, I know what I'm going to be working on. I can get parts that I think I'll need, go back out into the field, be ready to do the work. I can go out of this map, and these are all different categories of things that have already been added to our system. So we also have our street signs. You're all very familiar, we're going to be replacing all of our street signs shortly. So this has every single street sign in our inventory. I can click on a sign, it's going to tell me the intersection of it. And then also, again, pictures, there are several of them that we have pictures of also, and you can pull it up. And when we go to replace the new signs, we'll be taking the old sign out, putting the new sign in, and we'll have a side-by-side photo to show the before and after effect of what we're doing, which is also kind of nice. Lastly, and this is a really big one for our traffic signs, we're required by Cal Muncie to keep inventory of all of our regulatory signs and keep the reflectivity on them up to date. That is something that in the past, we've kind of been negligent on. So now we have a complete inventory of all of our signs. We have, you can see different labels and different symbols for each type of sign. You can click on a sign, and it's going to tell you exactly what the sign is. It's going to tell you whether it's regulatory or not right at the very top. And again, we can go out, take pictures of that sign, and come back to the office or to the yard and start doing assessments on those signs and getting them replaced in a more efficient manner. And again, having them inventoried and having a complete number of every single item and having it placed on a map makes things very convenient for getting out in the field and being more productive. At that point, those are the three things we're mainly using it for, but in the future, we have several other items that are going to be coming on. We're really excited about the parks. We're going to be able to go out and GIS every single meter and backflow in each park, every single irrigation valve, the type of valve, the irrigation control clock, and all the number of valves that it controls. That will all be automized now, so we don't have to go out and look for a valve in the ground with a probe. It'll be GISed, exact location. If it's buried under ivy, we're going to have the spot, and we just go there with a probe and hit it instead of searching for it in a pile of ivy for an hour. So in the long run, this is going to make our crews extremely efficient, and we're pretty excited.
I think, what I'll say, there's another real positive thing is, Nick was alluding to the fact that there's a lot of records we have to keep, or in some cases, maybe there. This is now a much fun, I use the word fun with quotes, but it's a lot more fun method for the crews to document the condition. So for example, when he's able to pull up a street sign, if somebody says you have from a liability, a legal situation, we're able to pull up and go in and look exactly what was at that intersection, and in many cases, document that, no, we did have the right sign. It was here. Here's the condition. Here's the maintenance records for the intersection. So it does have a lot of positive attributes to help us in a variety of ways, mostly knowing, allowing us to maintain, but also to document the condition when we did something. And like I say, if you can attach a location to it, then there's probably an attribute that we can use. Now, we're also going to be, we're going to try to be intelligent about choosing those that add efficiency and effectiveness to the job that we do. But I mean, you know, here you can see there's a condition analysis, so we know what we have. So that's part of the, and like they were mentioning, when they go out and replace a sign, we show the sign coming out, the new one going in, and they fill in. It's right there when they're doing it, the dates save, done, and it's not that they have to go fill all the paperwork and then come back in at the end of the day or the week and then document it. So it's really going to improve, I think, the overall efficiency, and it's not having to touch the thing three or four times to get the work done.
Great.
So with that, like I said, that's basically what we're using it for in municipal operations at this point. Once we start getting facility items and the park items added to this, then the whole crew will be able to take it out in each division and use it to a much more full capacity like streets and water are beginning to now. And hopefully, over the next year, we'll be there, and the guys are all pretty excited about it.
Great. Well, if you're wrapping up your segment, let me just ask if the council has any questions about Nick's presentation? No? Good. Oh, yeah. Go ahead.
So how many of these iPads would be floating around? Would there be one for each of the crew member?
Yeah, so currently, we have 10 or 11 public works employees between sewer and municipal operations, and each of us have our own iPad for the field.
And everyone's trained and facile on how to use the device and...
At this point, everybody has a grasp of how it works. Myself and Jake who do streets and water, like I said, because they're already up and running, we've been using it, and we're very familiar with it and comfortable with it. Some of our other crew members are fairly new with the town and with the system and are still learning it, but they have actually a training tomorrow, and we'll get a little more information from Solomon and Ingrid on that. And then, starting next week, once they get that training from them, we'll be using it with them in the field and getting them more experience with it.
And just to sort of reiterate or ask the question with regards to training, I mean, that's something when we, because invariably, there's turnover. When we have new people in, you'll have a training that someone will go in, and this will be part of their orientation process, so they'll have, they'll be able to immediately affect what they're trying to do.
I would say, training's going to be ongoing, because as you'll be learning, we have what I call the app appetizer. So there's a whole lot of apps that we'll be learning. But yes, it'll be part of our training regimen, it'll be part of our binder project to document, part of what we train and utilize. And it's not just, as you're going to see, it's not just the guys in the field are going to be able to use this. It's got some wider applications and some fun applications, too, that can help get information about the community out in a useful, practical way.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up.
Don would take over.
All right. Thank you. As Nick said, we are all very excited about this, making our job much easier. But again, we are just scratching the surface at this point, and I think a whole world of opportunities are going to open up by using this. What I'd like to do is show you a couple of things. As you know, we're under construction with the recycled water expansion project. And oftentimes, when something like, a project like this is going on, we're out there taking pictures and we're documenting that, but those pictures end up in a file somewhere, or they're, they used to be like a Polaroid or a hard copy picture, and they're in an envelope, a real file, you know, somewhere. And they just get put away, and they're lost forever. As Steve mentioned, he's been prodding us along on this binder project. Here's the binder. It's not volumes and volumes of binders, but it's all going to be in one place. So down here at the pump station, you see a lot of different, I can expand on it. These are all a bunch of different parts and pieces, valves, pipelines, different things. But we're putting in new pipeline as part of this project. And if I touch on this, I can look at the photos here as Nick was showing. So this is, we can see the actual pipeline. While the pipe's being put in the ground, we can document and be able to reach back and see the alignment of the pipe. If we follow these, if we follow these blue dots from this one near the tennis court and go down the vineyard, we'll see the next one. We can follow and know the pipe alignment. There's some better things here at the plant that I want to show you as well. I just can't seem to get right on that. So out in the middle of the vineyard, you know, we have a lot of things in town, of course, and on Mulberry Street and on different streets where there's landmarks, but out in the middle of the vineyard, it's easy to lose track of where the recycled water line is. This will be a great tool to find out where we are, so we can see the valve and the alignment of the pipe. I've got a couple others here that show the alignment of the pipe in the actual vineyard, so you know it's on the right-hand side of the road, left-hand side, wherever the actual So I'm going to zoom in, and we're going to go back to the wastewater treatment plant. So here, we've done quite a bit. There's a lot of work. It's a congested area where we're doing some work, we're replacing pumps, motors, installing new equipment. And as Nick pointed out, you know, he took a picture of the fire hydrant, and it was like, well, that's nice. And he was showing that as a, you know, for the purposes of the presentation. But in real life, we've actually taken some good pictures to show in the future if there's any work going on. As you'll see, I'm going to try to find you a good picture. We've got all these little pipes and larger pipes and different things. So if we're doing work in that area, we can use these pictures to say, okay, based on the measurements, or, you know, based on these pictures, we know where not to work, so we're not going to disturb work that's already been done, damaging equipment. Another thing about like this binder project, all the parts and pieces of, you know, pumps and motors and chlorine analyzers all come with an operations and maintenance manual. We've got a lot of these now downloaded to the iPad. So if an operator is out at the pump and having some trouble and needs to, you know, do some troubleshooting or has a question, we've got the whole 41-page operation and maintenance manual right at our fingertips. Same with hot chlorine analyzer to make sure that we're not discharging chlorinated water to the river. If there's, you have to program this thing. It's a very smart piece of equipment, and you can pull up wiring schematics, the whole, you know, how to toggle through the operation of the unit. So all of this is right at our fingertips. When we have the iPad, we're just, it's like Steve has said, it's the binder project. It's the whole encyclopedia set right inside the iPad. So like I say, we're just scratching the surface, and we've got a lot of points, as you can see here, surrounded by this one red dot. Got a lot of stuff going on. So what we're trying to do is populate some of those cells now. Now that we've got the data captured, we're going to come back and we'll have to add things, and we'll be constantly adding new pieces of equipment throughout the treatment plant as well. This is just a small smattering of what's going on with this recycled water project that's kept us pretty busy. But again, we're very excited about where we're going, and I'm sure we don't even know where we're going to end up, but it's really exciting and making our jobs a lot easier.
Questions? Councilmember Mueller?
No, I have a question for Solomon. This is so much information, it's very important information. What kind of a security system do we have? We hear every day about the hackers out there, and, you know, they're going in new directions all the time, so...
So what we are using is, we are using, Esri is a company that makes the GIS software as a leader in the world, and they have what we call the cloud account system, which is very secure. So every member or every team in the town has to be invited into the organization account before you can see that. So all the information that Don and Nick showed is not available in the public. Even if you see the URL, it's going to ask you for a password. And if you don't have the password, you're not getting it. So that information is secured. They take care of all the security as to authenticate into their system to get. So just like the town of Yanville has a slice of, a little piece of their big cloud. So they have a redundant cloud out there, and we just bought a slice of that, that we are pushing our data into it securely. So the town IT guy doesn't have to worry about all that security and all the bandwidth that goes with the data transfer. We are putting the load on the company because we've worked with them, we use their software, and it's trusted to be. So everything is secured, all the layers, even within, you can see the teams. Don's team, we can limit what they can see. So Don's team can see everything that Nick's team see, but they cannot go and edit what Nick's team does, and vice versa. So he can see, for instance, let me show you, that's the sewer map. The sewer map is coming up. So he has that information out there. Nick's team can see that sewer map, but they cannot go in and edit any information. So we handle the security based on username and authentication. So that is how we've been able to structure that out. So that is solid until a password becomes, you know, loose out there, then it becomes dangerous. But once it is there and we know about it, Jacob knows it, he can go into the backend and just delete that account.
Okay.
So it's just a matter of just to drop down and delete, and you are out of the account, which I'll show on this site. But here, this is the, I think, most might have seen the hard copy map, the sewer map now is on their fingertips. And one of the things we also did was, the accuracy of those were actually engineering accuracy. We actually came with survey, tremble units to pick the assets that we wanted to know for sewer and water. Then we went back in the field, I actually did field testing, sampling, to make sure that this thing is really going to find it. So for instance, like cleanout, we went out and just turned the GPS on and said, lead us into this cleanout. And the system, as you're moving in the field, your GPS is moving, and it gets right on the money. So I've done some sampling with them to make sure that we are on the same thing, how to find asset in the field, even when it's, you know, maybe some grass is over it or something like that, you should be able to still see it, okay, there was a cleanout right here. We can see it on the map. The GPS will bring you right where it's supposed to be.
Any other questions at this point? No? All right.
Let me switch over here real quick.
So it sounds like there will always be something for our public works guys to be working on, populating the data.
Yeah.
And we're going to show you that it's not just for public works.
Public works, yeah. So on the backend, with regards to the question that you had, this is the organization account. So this is where anybody that have access to, who has permission to come into it, will have to be, we have to ID to it as a name user. And then, once we don't, we don't want, we see that, okay, you tell us that something has happened, then we can disable you. So it's just a bottom of, and that's why we, one of the trainings we're giving Jacob to be able to say, okay, I think my password is out there, we can just take you out and then re-invite you again and reset your password. So we can control that very easily. And then there are some layers that you want the public to have access to. So those layers, we can give that layers permission to say, anybody can see you. So we can control the layers that we make available to the public, and then we can make layers that we don't want them to see to be out because of the sensitivity of that layer. So that's security, Councilor. But this is some of the work that Jacob does on the backend. As Steve was saying, we've also tried to make it for staff in the office, how do you find all these assets? So this map, this application here shows all the, a bunch of the layers that we have. You can see that list keeps going on and on, that any town's staff in the office will be able to come in and be able to find a particular light. So who owns the light? They can find that light. If they are looking for a parcel, they can come in and type in the parcel they are looking for, and the system will locate that parcel for you.
John's house.
So you should be able to come in and do, and we have, the layers that Don's team is using, that layer is also made available in the field. So if somebody's talking about a particular A line in that area, they can have that information in the office. And this is, this application is still within the organization. So if you don't have permission, you can see it. We're still controlling it from that side. And then one other function that we've had, what you're, a couple of, so here, we have the trees, all the trees that A Plus had in their database. We also, we took that data from them, and we plotted, they had the X and Y coordinates, so we simply just plotted those X and Y and was able to, you know, find where those trees they collected are located. So we can get information about that particular tree. It's in the system, it's on the iPads. You have access to it 24/7, no matter where you are in the world. So just let us know, we can push it. Once we have internet connection, you can get access to that. The other function that we also say, let's say some, we came up with some scenario to say, if one of the ladies, front staff picks up a call, somebody's calling about a request, there are so many ways we can do, we can use a work order system. But with this application, what allows them to do is that they can come in and say, okay, a new complaint is coming in, they can find a parcel... They can find a parcel or that, or where the request is coming from, come in over here and then create the type of request that they want, they want, they want to be done. Fill in just a little bit of information and once they are done, once they are done with that, that information, actually, they can attach a picture or document they want. Now, because this is utility operation, we have passed that layer into Don's map. So just a matter of, Don's, you know, pinching the map to refresh it, he will see that new point that we created, the new request that we created, he's going to see that, that point on his system. As, once it's red, so we give the color code to be red if it's not assigned, gold if it's assigned, green if it's completed. So the, the field staff can just see that, you know, there's a new incident on the iPad with the same color code, go over there, fix that issue, they change it to green, take some pictures to attach it. The person in the office can also see that, that live interaction without being able to say, "Hey, okay, the address is here." Now relatively, this is a small town, so it's, it's much easier to know places around. But in, still, you can be able to track locations of where incidents are happening or by even having a dialogue between the field staff and then the office staff. And the meters, so even the water meters, one of the things that we picked out the last time I was here was the, the water meter. So all the water meters that they have, we have in the system, we've added the water meters as well, so the service meters. So here, this plus up all the service meters. So you should be able to, you know, they can come in the, now that, it's not just in the database that you just see the database. Now you can relate where it actually is on the ground. And then, so the, the field staff can actually enable the GPS. I'm looking for this meter, it will, the GPS will walk you straight to the meter, where the meter is, and then be able to do what you need to do over there as well. So some of, those are some of the, the applications we are building and we call this my, my community internal, because the capability that we are giving for the internal staff is going to be different than what we'll give to the public. And I'll show a, a bit of what we'll make available for the public that you can go in and search and get information on, on asset that you are looking for. One other application that we worked on the last time we were here was the pavement index. So it was a dialogue that we just had real quick and say, "Yes, we can do something like that." So what they wanted to do was to be able to show a road which they cannot do any digging on and then the extent to what time you cannot dig on. So they wanted to have something to give to the utilities and Nick was narrating something like, "This is great. You can send it to the utility companies that, hey, this is the URL, check it. This is the streets that we have. You cannot dig on the street because we just paved the streets." And this is a simple, one of the applications that the system is there. And Jacob has the backend capabilities, so he will, if a, if a new road, you know, change from green to red, he can change the color from the backend and this one will update. So all that we need to do is either have this on the public internal site or send it to the utility companies and they can just check in. Anytime they want to do some digging, we can relate. Or, yes, yesterday, one of the things we're talking about is to be able to say, for roads that we have plans to do it, we can give it a red color. So the utility companies, they can say, you know, Joe was saying, "Hey, take a look at the map. This is the areas that we are going to work on. If you have any plans, come along and do it right now before it goes red." So those are some of the, the capabilities that the application is going to allow town staff to do, the pavement index. The other one is the zoning. So in here, what Jacob did was take their old zoning layer and be able to bring it into a live map that you can now see where the zonings are from the static map that we have. Now you have that, that document in your, in your, in the palm of the hand that you can, you can get access to it anywhere that you have. The other one we are working on, this is just a prototype, we will change the concept, is what we call the story maps. So we are working to bring, make couple of story maps as to tell the story of the town by using maps and pictures. So that's an easy way to be able to let people find all the beautiful places that they want to visit once they are down here. And that's one of the things that we are working on. This is the first prototype, but if you take a look at this sample from Utah, it gives you an example. So if I want to see hotels in Yountville, you can click on the tab and see all the hotels that we have. If you want to see, we talked about wine tasting places. So that'll be another tab that will list all the wine tasting places. So these are some of the things that the technology can, can bring to the table, incorporating maps and telling a story. People see a map, they see a picture, it gets their attention going. It's easy to communicate information in that way. And each of the point actually has some stories, a picture and just a little bit of detail about the place that if they want to read about it. And whilst they are out in the field, they can find their location and be able to walk through. So most, almost everybody who will come will have a, some sort of a smart device. Or even when they check in the hotel, we can have a media, that's one of the things that we are working on to be able to say, "How do we get the attention within the shortest possible time?" So that is one of the things that we're also working on. And then I'll show you one more. This is, this application is what will be the, the public facing. This is still in, in the initial development stages. But when this application is done, it will be something like this that you can come in. So here, this is a sample that we have. We can find a parcel in, in our town and be able to find a parcel and generate a report about that parcel. So any information that we want the public to have about a property in town, the flat zone, zoning layer, all that information, school district, I mean, all that information can, you can get as a public, we can give the public access to that information. And that is this application here, once we are done with, the towns on will be almost the same as what you can generate on this application, to be able to generate a report of a property just by going out there. So the, the extent to which you can use GIS is pretty much to the imagination of the user. Because in most part, every decision or everything we do relates to a location. And once we can have a location in it, that means you can use, you can apply GIS. So this is, I'll pass it back to Ingrid and we wanted to say thank you very much for your time to listen to us and we love the ideas. Keep, keep them coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Solomon.
And one of the things I want to mention on this public facing application for us, we don't put any names out there of any of the residents. You know, they can find that out at the county. But for the town, you know, it suggests, because for security and for the community, they may not want to have their names up, up there, listed up there. So that's one of the things, you don't, you can tell us exactly what you want to be out there about any given parcel, especially when you have people from law enforcement that live in the community, you know, you don't want that type of thing out there for them. So, so we could limit exactly what someone looking at, because this is all public information. You could limit what you place out there. And that's another level of security for, you know, for your residents. And that, that would be very good. I just wanted to let you know, we're, we're very excited. We are very excited about using GIS. We've been, City Rancho Cucamonga bought GIS back in 1985. We're user 61 with Esri and they're in the hundreds of thousands of users right now. So we love what we do. We're excited every time one of the staff comes and asks us to do something different or, you know, "Can we do this? And can you show us this?" And it's with that kind of excitement and enthusiasm that we bring to you and to your staff in, in helping you to get this. We have, you know, we've, we've had all the headaches and the tears and, you know, we've done all of that and we don't want you to have to do that. So now that we could come in, we just take what, what we have already developed and help to tweak it for you, of course, because your city is smaller than ours. I mean, your town is smaller than our city. So it's, it's a matter of just, you know, utilizing what we already have. And like I said, we're excited. We thank you for this opportunity to be able to do this. And this is just a small sampling of what is going to happen. I hope you're pleased with what you saw and there's gonna be lots more to come because I know Steve, so there's gonna be lots more to come.
And I think that's a, a really good overview because, you know, initially, some of our employees go, "Well, that's really nice. You know, what does that have to do with me?" And when we look at it, for example, Parks and Rec, at first blush, you think, "Well, does that really have a whole lot to do?" But we could actually track and look at, do we get a lot of requests for service coming from a neighborhood? And if we can get that data and we look at it visually, it may help us to go, "Hmm, maybe we need to be adjusting our service delivery or this park could use an equipment younger. Could we have a higher propensity of families in this neighborhood?" One of my personal favorites will be when we work with Sergeant Wilkinson is, "Where are tickets really issued? Cause we can, and which intersections?" Now I say that doesn't, but now we can start looking at it and instead of it being anecdotal, we're actually able to put it in, track a year over a year and go, "No, we really wrote a lot of tickets at Oak Circle and Washington." And oh, by the way, we really do write bike tickets and we can actually do those. Now the reason I say that is then we have information to do trend analysis that can help us in other decisions. One of the other ones that'll be, one of the earlier ones we're going to be working on is also a citizen service application because most, all of us nowadays are actually carrying around a tool that can be very helpful. It's called a smartphone. Those of you with a track phone don't get to play, but if you have a smartphone, you're already carrying around something that has geographical embeddedness. So if somebody, let's say a street light's out, you know, classic thing that happens now is somebody calls us and says, "There's a street light out on Oak Circle." We have 30 street lights on Oak Circle. So it'd be more helpful if we knew where. But if they're able to go in, take a picture, fill in the form, send it to us, then we can then quickly issue a work order, a service, same thing. I mean, you can do it down to mutt mitts and, you know, the canisters out or the garbage. I mean, I'm just saying, there's lots of things that for us in our scale organization can help us be more efficient in delivering or responding to a changed environment and using technology that people already have. Because then they can participate in the solution and, and more so they can do a lot of this when it's timely and convenient for them. Or conversely, if we're able to encourage them, much like a lot of our other technology, if we can engage people when it's convenient for them as opposed to when it's convenient for us. And that's been one of the biggest societal changes, is people are doing stuff at different times. There, people may be shopping now online, doing things, our online registration, all those various things. It allows us to be more efficient and effective and meet our citizens and our visitor and our constituent needs in ways. So we are excited. As you know, we have three more years of funding that we keep looking at this, but this is where the money is going. And now we're gonna start doing what I think is a greater use. You're also gonna see, they showed you the opportunity that we can partner with the chamber and the business community. Our arts commission is already excited because they have an assignment. The Art Walk will become one of those storyboards that Ingrid mentioned. And we're currently working with the 50th Anniversary Committee on some historical backgrounds, so we'll be able to footnote and, and document some of the history of the community and locations, again, by a parcel. And we will, in a couple of years, be able to know that question, which intersection had the most stop violations. So that's just a little sampler on where we're going.
Council have any other questions?
I did wanna ask, how, how agile is the platform in the sense of, you know, you've been with the company for many, many years. Obviously, if you're using a Google Maps system as they update maps, that's how frequent the mapping gets updated. But if technology is changing in five years, 10 years, are you able to adapt very easily to that?
Yes. I started with Rancho in 1986. Actually, yesterday was my 28th anniversary with the City Rancho Cucamonga. And the software has changed. When I, when I came on, on board, it was 2.3. And now the version is a 10.3, is it Solomon?
Yeah.
It's a 10.3. One of the things that, that as Jacob gets better, and we're trying to clone Solomon into Jacob, he will be attending a week-long session with the company and they will go through all the changes. He will be able to come back in and adopt to them. But every change that occurs, that he will be notified, whatever it is, they will notify you. Because the company is, it's, it's not just a national company, it's a worldwide company. So they have, it's so international, users that they have to stay abreast. But this particular company, Esri, is the world leader in GIS. They have totally dominated it. And no, we don't use, they don't use Google Maps. They use their...
We've never met.
Yeah, they do their own mapping. No, it's, it's not them that way. So, yeah, it's an international company and they have to keep up with, with all the changes and, which is something that you'll be able to do.
With, with regards to the imagery that you see on, the imagery background you see, we have already, it's a process in to buy a current one from Napa County for the town, which is part of the project. And once that becomes available, we will then, with permission of the town, we take that town scope with considering what Public Works need, the extent they need, take it to Esri and say, "Take the old one you have and then put ours in there." So when you go on the app platform, it's going to be a current, up-to-date imagery of the town on the app platform. In terms of changing with technology, yes, iPhone, iPad, you know, the guys are working on newer products, there's something new coming in next six months, but the company is geared to do that. And all the platforms are what we call the responsive design, which yesterday we, we tried with the council member, that it adapts to the platform. So for instance, the story maps, when you're on a bigger screen, it will resize itself to be on a bigger screen. Or when you go on a little iPhone or Android device, it will automatically intelligently will shrink to that device to make it. So in terms of adaptation to technology, you can bet on that, as, they are top of that. They keep trained with all the technologies and where the platforms, who is moving and who is, so we should be, we should be in good shape.
And the same things that you can see on the iPhone, you could see on the Android and even the Windows platform, so.
Great. Yes, Nick?
And I'm sorry, I just wanted to add also, we're all familiar with the recent earthquake that we had and the water infrastructure damage that we had in Napa. And I was firsthand, got to go down there and work for the week and help them do repairs and saw what they had to work with as far as paper maps and trying to locate valve lids that were buried under recently poured new roads that hadn't been brought up to surface and stuff like that yet. These maps, everything has been GIS pointed to the exact spot. If we ever have a leak in the middle of the night and we need to come in and find valves, if we did paving the Thursday before and they're not available, I can go to the exact location, dig that valve up and have it shut off in a matter of minutes. Compared to Napa, we had some water lines that major leaks on the day of the earthquake, they weren't shut off for 12 to 16 hours because they were jackhammering looking for lids. So to be able to come in in the middle of the night and have a lit screen and not have a flashlight, looking at a paper map and be able to go directly to the valve and get things shut off is gonna be an extremely valuable asset if we do have water line leaks in the middle of the night or, God forbid, another big earthquake.
Yeah, that's a great point. Excellent. Any other comments from council? I know councilmembers Mueller and Dornbecker and town manager and I all saw this in your trailer at the League of California Cities Conference and we were all quite impressed then. And it is satisfying to see not only the, the money that's been invested already, but all the time with the data collection that we're actually seeing some of those results starting to, to come together and already have practical uses for it. It's really encouraging. So thank you very much for, for bringing, bringing all this to us.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's always good to get our Public Works guys out here, especially in a tie. I see next up, we have no public hearings tonight, so we'll go to our first of two administrative regular items and report an update on the 50th Anniversary Ad Hoc Committee.
So back before you tonight, wow, I heard crackling. Back before you tonight is the 50th Anniversary and the ad hoc committee's recommendation for the programs and projects for the upcoming year. We went into a little bit more detail in the staff report and talked through several of the projects, or all of the projects, and events that were being proposed. Quickly, we'll go, just run through those and then if we, if you have specific questions and want more information on specific projects, obviously, councilmember Dornbecker, Mueller and Steve and I can assist with that. So the first project, which you've already heard about, is the preservation and display of the Georgian mill grinding stones. This project is moving forward and is budgeted for $26,000 at the implementation. The other, next project is an event, which would be a big free event in August. It would be a celebration and some of the details are top secret, but we're looking at this as an expensive... But we're looking at this as an expense of $18,000.
At some point, will the council actually learn of the event, especially with an $18,000 price tag? I would expect to.
That's my question.
I will leave that up to Councilmember Dornbecker.
Well, I'd be happy to talk about this. This particular event has a few aspects to it that are a surprise for the entire town. And so we don't want to diminish or ruin the surprise. One thing I can tell you is that the evening will culminate in a dance party with music from 1965, 1960s. But it's, there is no charge for people to participate. And some of the, at some point, I will, you know, let just the council in on these surprises, but I do not want to do that when we're televising this. Because some of the, the delight of this event would be diminished if we revealed the surprises. But believe me, it's like nothing you'll have ever experienced.
And I don't mean, I don't mean to totally interrupt Samantha's presentation, but there, you know, because there are significant price tags on some of these things, so we need to be sure to be monitoring as we go along. So anyway, sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. The next would be the celebration on the actual anniversary date, which is February 4th. It would be a free event at the community center where we have speakers and VIPs who are integral from incorporation to current, who are still with us. Wine, food, bubbles, that kind of jazz. We're also trying to see about getting another aerial Y photo at Yount and Washington Street just when the event starts. And then what, we could offer those for sale. People could order copies of the aerial Y photo and have that be a little bit of a fundraiser to offset some cost. The next item is a historical play that would work with the Yountville Elementary School children. This one, we're still kind of panning out. We need to identify some community partners, and Councilmember Mueller is working hard on that. But we look, it would be a one-time play. We're possibly looking at the Saturday before Yountville Days as our target date for that. And it would be a one-time play. We're looking at a budget of $2,000 to cover costumes and sets and that type of thing. The next item is a street banner program, which also has a business sponsorship attached to it. So we would work with a designer on several, probably four to six style of banners that would be designed for our street poles. We're looking at photographs from 50 years ago and up to current. And those would also have a flap, as you see in the picture, that would designate sponsored by a business. It's a nice way to encourage businesses to be a part of the 50th Anniversary, get some promotion, and then also offset the costs of that program, which we look at about $4,000. And those would go up right after the snowflakes come down and the Festival of Lights ends. And they would stay up until we put up the flags at Memorial Day. And then they would go back up again, the banners would go back up again when we take the Memorial Day flags down, or excuse me, the flags down again in September after Labor Day. And they would stay up until the snowflakes go up again.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So this is December, right?
Yes.
So you need sponsors for this kind of stuff? Or you're suggesting you might have sponsors by February? Through the holidays and into January?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, has there been a call for this already?
We're already working on it. We pitched it to the, or excuse me, the Chamber of Commerce, and we're working on the program. It only takes about two weeks to generate the banners themselves, so I don't really, the Festival of Lights, typically the lights and the snowflakes don't come down until the end of February.
Right, okay. Just asking.
And you have a 50th Anniversary logo already designed?
The committee has designed a logo, which you'll see below next to collateral items. That wouldn't necessarily be the whole banner. It would be something a little bit different, but would incorporate those same type of...
Yeah, because the shapes are a little different.
Yes.
Okay.
The next item is an information and history kiosk, which would mainly be located at the community center. I think some of you saw this particular item at the League of California Cities Conference as well. It's an interactive kiosk where the public would have information right at their fingertips, literally. And there would be eight to 10 subject areas on the kiosk. Typically speaking, there's some, there are short videos or slideshows, very visual. The discussion is that the town, possibly the town, town history, visitor center, the museum, the veterans home, vintners, and more would have the ability to have one of those subject areas. It, it would be a mobile unit, and it could be brought to events like Yountville Days and the Festival of Lights, but it would generally be housed in the community center lobby or out front as weather permits. The price tag for that item with its carrying case is $16,000. I attached a link to a short video, if you had a chance to look at that, that kind of walked you through what that is. Any questions on that one?
Seems like an expensive kiosk. I just, seems like a big number. I don't remember the total budget off the top of my head, but I think this, does this move through that? All these numbers?
Well, that's why you're here today is to evaluate. Your 50th Anniversary Committee has come up with a rather active program, and I will point out, this is not everything. This is the edited version. And some of these things have developed a little bit. So we're here to validate or, one, if you need to appropriate more, because your math is correct. This does not, you cannot get all of these things done for the $50,000 budget that you allocated. Now, in fairness, there is some potential for revenue that we have not offset, but because we don't know where we're at with that, we do need to make sure that if you want to go forward and that we have the expenditure side and work on bringing the sponsorship revenue in, we do believe there's some opportunities for sponsorship. But because the expenditure will need to move forward on some of these items, and again, this is a validation. If the council as a whole does not want any of these items or wants to modify them, then the 50th Anniversary Committee and the Ad Hoc Committee needs greater direction from you so that they can go do this.
It was a question.
Nope, that's why we're here.
That's, we want the feedback, I think, in, in be able to answer those questions. And I'm just here representing the committee, which is made up of the two council members, but quite a few others in the community too. And I think they just, this is more so we can get your direction. So if the direction is to go back and cut and paste and move things, then that is the direction. But I want to finish the...
I was going to have more questions on that, but I think once you finish all of your presentation, I'll come back on that one.
Okay.
And that, just while we're on the kiosk, that link didn't seem to work on the tablet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It doesn't on mine.
Okay.
So just a pointer. I did see that, I don't remember it being this particular kiosk.
They have one, they have several different models. Some of them look, you know, are of a square that look like you would hang it on a wall, similar to a picture. This is the mobile unit picture that we have there. So it's made to be able to be taken.
It is a very cool.
And I would also point out that this is not a, the kiosk is not a one-time thing because we can reprogram those eight to 10 program areas. So we think it's a great way to engage some of the community partners, and then they can update information. We can have a history walking tour, we can do the Art Walk, Veterans Home, Vintners. But in three years, if we want to reprogram and put different information in that cell, we get to do that. So it's a, this one has longevity to it. It's not a, you know, it's not a consumable.
It's interesting too, because it's basically a small computer in there. So you can actually take a, you know, some drive and totally change the whole thing and take it to an event and have it be very specialized. So there is, there is some ability, and we're still kind of learning a little bit more how the technology works, but there's the ability to really utilize this in, in different ways as well. This is just kind of for the 50th Anniversary Committee, what we've been focusing on.
Also, this is something that we were looking at as sort of a legacy from the 50th Anniversary, something that will live on and, you know, can even, you know, some of, one of the layers of it could be a recap of the 50th Anniversary, a photograph of the, the aerial photograph and things like that. So there, and we are definitely going to be pursuing sponsorships for most of these ideas that we have.
The presentation was made specifically about the kiosk. It was horizontal or square and the touchscreen. That was a motion sensor touchscreen?
It's a motion, you don't actually like...
Yeah, you just kind of wave by it. And it's very cool technology, but, you know, we could talk later, once you get through your presentation about how it all adds up.
The next item was the community center gallery item, and it's a $3,000 line item for preparation and framing. So as part of the town's clerk budget, we have an intern coming on that's going to assist us in electronically archiving some of the documents that Michelle has in storage. They're of historical nature for the town, as well as some at the museum and then some through the Historical Society. So this person is going to work with gathering those items and helping us put together a display, which would be through Yountville's history. There's a picture there that kind of shows you a historical timeline, how that, they put that together. So that may or may not, that's just an idea. But the $3,000 is really just for the preparation and framing of that timeline. So it would hang up in the community center gallery for four months, and then it would move up to the, the Napa Valley Museum Spotlight Gallery and be displayed there as well. There is potential that it could find a permanent home somewhere afterwards, but it would be a really interesting timeline of Yountville's history. So any questions on that one while we're there?
Specific to the content here, you talk about, and I have an overall question about this as it relates to content, the 50th Anniversary, not the 150th Anniversary. That we keep our focus on, it's not necessarily a history of all the pioneer days of, you know, the mid 1800s, but this is talking about our incorporation of the town.
Yeah, I think the committee's discussion is that you're celebrating the 50th Anniversary of the town's incorporation, but it's a really great opportunity to capture and really document more of the real, true history of Yountville, which is not necessarily well-known or publicized. So I think they're taking it as an opportunity to do some of those projects in celebration of our 50th year.
Some of those being pioneer days, but not all being pioneer days. Because all, most of what I've seen here is old historical and not so much what's actually happened since incorporation. So I just hope that that, and you can't, you can't display all the content in these, you know, in this context here. But that would just be a caution that I have. It looks, in some of the examples, like there's a strong emphasis on pioneer and not as much on 50th Anniversary.
Excuse me, but that's one of the reasons why the kiosk, we thought would be, you know, a legacy that would incorporate, for example, our Epicurean history and, or, you know, our wine tasting history and things like that, so that it does bring it back to the 50 years since we've been incorporated. But certainly, the, you know, the, the legacy from the pioneer days is important too. But we, we wanted to incorporate both, you know, both the old history and the history since 1965.
The next item is an alumni, including alumnis in the annual appreciation dinner. So as you know, we host a recognition dinner each year for the board and commission members and volunteers. In 2015, the discussion is to also invite past staff, board, commission, and council alumni from the last, since the incorporation of the town, as many as we can. And the budget here is really just for dinner for the additional people that we estimate we may draw. The core event is already budgeted in the 14, 15 budget. So we're looking at a line item of approximately not to exceed $3,000. Just depends on how many come. The next one is 50th Anniversary Collateral Item, so I don't have a specific, you know, hat to show you tonight, but we're looking at doing hats, tote bags, things that the committee seems, or deems appropriate. And all of those would cover their expense. They, they wouldn't be, some of them would be given away as prizes, but those items would also be sold at the community center and at the Chamber of Commerce, and they would cover their costs. But there is an expense to ordering those things. There's the Yountville Sun ongoing series, so a series of articles, which this has already started, will be featured in the Yountville Sun within the next year, highlight significant dates, people and places of Yountville's past 50 years. It's approximately $2,500 cost for that.
Does that mean you're being a sponsor? The town is being a sponsor of that?
Yes.
Yes, we are.
So projects that we identified and are proposing to move forward for, that we identified other funding sources for, which is the, we discussed a little bit earlier with the GIS presentation, identification of historic buildings and a self-guided tour. So we're integrating that into the current GIS project, and there's no additional cost for that. Archiving and preserving historical documents, including the Yountville Sun. So this is taking it a little bit step further from what we talked about under the gallery timeline and working with the clerk and Sharon Stensis, the Historical Society, and looking at different things that we would like to electronically archive within our own files. And that's currently budgeted within the town clerk budget. The Spotlight Gallery that I mentioned, there's no cost, additional cost for that. We're also looking at a historical film series at the community center, which would be free to the public, and it's minimal building staff time, and we have those historical videos through Projects Margie, excuse me, has worked on, as well as the Veterans Home has some. So there would be no additional cost for that. And then the commemorative sculpture at Town Hall is something being worked on through the Yountville Arts Commission, and it'll be funded through donors. So there would be no additional cost for that. So as you already discussed briefly, this is about $80,000 in total for all of these items. Attached to that was a spreadsheet that really called that out to you again. You currently budgeted $50,000 towards the anniversary celebration, and this staff report is asking for a budget adjustment of $30,000. We do anticipate almost $12,000 in offsetting revenue. I do believe that's a low sponsorship, or a low estimate as far as what we could bring in for revenue and sponsorships, but it is reasonable, and I don't want to overshoot that and just be very clear. So what we're asking is to review the project list and approve it and approve the budget adjustment if you see fit. Alternatives to that would be make suggested changes, give us some feedback on things that you like and don't like. We can go back to the committee and then bring this back to the council for approval. But as Steve mentioned, I think it's really important to get your feedback on the direction to move forward because it's fast approaching, and we want to be able to go back to the committee with some pretty consistent feedback to move forward.
Samantha, do you feel the need to go through this other attachment, the projected budget projects and the leads? Is this just more kind of for reference?
It's just informational. That was, that came before you, I think, two meetings ago for information as well. It's been updated slightly, and we did trim some stuff back.
It's basically the same information you just covered?
It is, yes.
Except for people attached to specific things? Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the council? I think we're going to need to discuss the budget part of it.
I have a question.
Yes.
So Town Manager mentioned that this isn't all the potential costs. You're, you're expected that this is not everything. Is that correct?
This is everything.
What I'm saying, it doesn't include, we have not included the offsetting revenue from the sponsorship. That's what's not included. This is all based on the anticipated expenditure allocation.
I think the, the comment you're specifically referencing is that this is a pared-down list of items from what they originally had. It was a larger list with a higher price tag, and they've...
It would be a not to exceed $80,000 budget.
But there were other things on here with more costs that you've already edited down.
Yeah, I think, I think we, well, some of them we found other funding sources for, and other ones did come off altogether. So this list has been pared down.
And I would say you also had the representatives, the council, but yes, this is, what I would say is there's a few bigger ticket items that were not necessarily anticipated. And I do want to remind everybody, when we put the $50,000 allocation in, it was really without any understanding of what the council wanted to do. So that's just a little background for you. But you are correct. I, I would say that the idea list has probably another 10 or 15 things on it that are no longer under the committee's consideration. And part of that came when we started to realize that some of these were starting to exceed that. What I would say, and the council will be able to clarify, this is what they would like you to consider approving, and that's why they're bringing it forward and asking for the additional allocation. But it's probably best to turn that dialogue over to them.
Yeah, if there's additional comments from our ad hoc representatives... Yeah, if there's additional comments from our ad hoc representatives to explain more or did Samantha cover everything?
I thought she did a pretty good job. I mean, one thing we talked about was perhaps prioritizing these, but we really thought just bring it to the council and have a discussion and get your input.
Any other thoughts?
Well, I think, I think I do want to stress that I'll be working with Steve on sponsorships to help offset some of the costs and, but I feel like the things we have proposed, there's a wonderful assortment of special one-time-only events and legacy things like the, you know, the Grist Mill, what, excuse me, the millstones and the kiosk, but the, the big party night is just, it's, you know, sort of a wonderful, just a community event that's going to be unforgettable. So there, there's just a really wonderful assortment of things to do and, and also we took into account that this would be an opportunity to preserve some of the historical documents and photographs and things that we just have in boxes in different places. So compiling those and really creating the historical archives, I think is an important element as well.
Seeing no members of the public here still, we won't worry about public comment. So continued conversation. I would just say that it frankly puts me, and I don't necessarily mean to speak for the other council members, not on the committee, in a slightly awkward position to evaluate this, because if we say no to any of these items, we're saying no to the party for the town's anniversary. Yet we're looking at being asked to allocate $30,000 more and having just seen this and not really been able to frankly, to absorb some of what is being presented. And I'm not saying that I'm opposed to it, it just puts, it puts us in a slightly awkward position, I will say, having not heard of any of this other than the $26,000 grindstone display prior to this presentation.
Actually, there was a presentation a couple of council meetings ago on the list. We did not go into this level of detail and discussion though. You are.
Were there dollar amounts attached to that list?
Yes.
Draft elements, yeah.
They were drafted.
All right, Councilor Hall.
So, okay, I'm going to put my finance hat on. What do I, how many people am I going to support for an $18,000 party that is top secret?
The, the list at this time is for 500. It would be, you know, sort of a blanket invitation, but we figure that there'd be about 500 people who would participate.
Yeah, when you take the list, it's, I mean, it's open to Yountville residents.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So every resident is invited to every event if there are events.
Plus other people.
Including the Veterans Home, we just had to guess a number to plan for details and that was our best guesstimate.
And I think so, if I could weigh in, it's not our intent to make you feel uncomfortable and have to say we're putting this on the chopping block, but maybe a suggestion, suggestion would be, we're comfortable with this dollar amount and now go back as a committee and figure out what you're going to implement and what you're not.
My concern may be a lone concern, so I don't need to speak for the other council members, but.
I have a concern.
I don't feel uncomfortable.
It's, it's a 60% increase over the original allocation. That's what, that's what it boils down to. And if I missed a budget like that by 60%, I'd have a different conversation with my employer than one we're having tonight.
Can I just point out that when you had the discussion as a council for this particular budget allocation, that the words placeholder and we'll put a dollar amount there were used, that this wasn't a firm budget, it was let's get started with this and let's put a committee together and let's discuss what we think would be the best way to celebrate. And so I don't, I don't, I take budgets very seriously and as Steve and I, as the staff liaisons to this, the intent was never to blow the budget out of the water. It was to bring the committee together, talk about what we thought were the best ways to celebrate the town's 50th anniversary. And we haven't, the money that we've spent, you know about, we came forward with the allocation for the millstone, so the money has not been spent and that's what we're here for is to try to pare it down if that's the intent, that's what the council's direction is, or to go back to the committee, you know, and do that work as well. So I just want to point out that that was the discussion and budget.
You're absolutely right.
And I also.
Vice Mayor.
So I totally agree with that. So let me, I just say a couple of things, one of which is I think that the, the historical element, like you say, all the documents that are sort of out there somewhere, I think there's a lot of benefit to that. I also look at, I wasn't here at the November meeting, but the Georgia Yount Grindstones are, you know, a historical piece that whether it's, I mean, in some ways to me, it's not really tied to this event, I understand the purpose of it, but I do like that. So I feel like in some ways you've kind of blown the budget because this large ticket item that's not necessarily related to events has been included in this.
That's almost the entire overage right there, that one item.
It is. So I, going back to your budget, I didn't really support the $50,000 in the first place. So I have to start off and say that. But, so that's why I don't like seeing it go over. I, you know, having a big event, so a couple, here's my comments. The big free event, the actual day event, and then the expansion of the volunteer dinner, these are three, three separate kind of events related to it. I don't, I think the expansion of the dinner makes a lot of sense because we have it and you invite certain people and it's historical. I just don't see why we're doing three different actual events. So I question that a little bit. I personally don't like the idea of the kiosk. I hate kiosks, they just sit there, you know, and a visit Napa Valley gives us something about how wonderful they are and I just, I don't think for $16,000, I, I don't think that's necessary. I think it would be very easy to get this down to your $80,000 minus about 20. If you think you can get your revenues to 11, then you're pretty much where we started. And if you're going to get, you know, some of these $3,000 of banner sponsorships, well, you can get that ahead of time. So I think that piece can kind of be held back a little bit. And if you can't, if everybody, nobody says, yeah, I'll give you a $500 check for it, then you don't do it. But I think it should be at 50 and I think a couple of these items, you know, $2,000 for a play, I don't know, the kid's got enough to do as it is. And what was the other one that I thought? I just, the fact that there's three events, I think that could, that could be pared down a little bit. I mean, the deli, we're a sponsor of the Yountville Sun series, so it's not like, I don't support all of this, but I think $50,000 is enough.
Councilor Hall, you had more comments?
No, I think I've, I think I've voiced my comments. I mean, I, I do agree with the statement that the Georgia Yount Grinding Stones, which we approved, I think it was the last meeting, perhaps they should be, you know, although we've already approved them, are they, are they slated to be coming from this budget?
Yes.
Item? Well, hindsight's 2020.
That could change.
I know, it's already like 2015 tonight after looking at this thing. No pun intended. You know, I, it's just a hard thing to say, let's go reprioritize. I know you guys have done a lot of hard work on this stuff. I'm, I, like council member Vice Mayor Chilton, I'm not a big kiosk fan. I tend to walk by them, but that doesn't mean that people don't enjoy them. I hate to rain on that parade, but I'm not, I don't see that as being something that I would feel, you know, warrants that much expense, although I haven't seen the thing live. So I also, you know, maybe it, maybe it makes your hair stand on end, I could certainly benefit from that. I'm okay with multiple parties. The, I'm uncomfortable approving $18,000 for something that's top secret. I mean, this is transparency, this is government. It's transparent we want to be. We're going to have a party that's going to cost 18 grand, maybe 500 people will show up.
Can I ask a question on that? I don't want to interrupt you. Is that, are there just people coming that we don't want to say ahead of time or, you know, is Kiss going to perform or is it a band? I mean.
Kiss isn't coming, I can tell you.
Kiss is not coming. There will be a band.
Okay, but I just, I just, I mean, to know that there'd be, you know, special guests that nobody needs to know, is that what we mean or?
Possibly.
We're going to have an elephant? I don't, I don't, I don't, I just don't.
I think in fairness, there are some elements to the event that would be better for you to chat with the individual ad hoc committee members and they can provide you with a background. I do think to echo the concerns, when you look at the budget, over half of the budget at $26,000 has now been earmarked towards the one historical millstone project and...
If I can interrupt, because I'm going where I think you were about to go. I don't think that should be in this budget. And so I would, the millstones came forward independent of the anniversary, I think. I mean, there was a motivation to do something with them, they've been sitting in the courtyard forever and there's a reason to do something now, I suppose. I hesitated when this came forward a few weeks ago at the $26,000 price tag, but to be fair to the ad hoc committee and the anniversary, I'm just not 100% convinced that that dollar amount should be attached to this budget, which causes it to go almost entirely out of budget.
Right, and I think that's a very good perspective.
I'm okay with leaving all the other items as presented. The one that I'm having the most trouble with, and I'm not looking to disclose the secret special guests, I'm not ready to approve an $18,000 party in any case without knowing anything about it. And so that's the one item that, I know it sounds like, you all know what you've got in mind, but I can't authorize $18,000 in a vacuum. I just won't, I won't support that. We could talk about it and approve it later, potentially, but if it's, I don't want to, I'm not going to say what I wouldn't consider worth $18,000 because that wouldn't be fair. But I think maybe, you know, if we look at the millstone thing as a historic display of, you know, pioneer heritage, independent of the anniversary, because I still am a little concerned about the emphasis on the mid 1800s and not emphasis on the evolution of Yountville from 50 years ago to today. So that's kind of where I'm at. I think if we remove that one item or at least share it, because we do that sometimes as well, we'll share line items in the budget with, you know, different categories. And if we shared that and the ad hoc committee knows that you now need to work that much harder to cost recover on some of this because we're concerned about how much money we're putting into this, I just, you know, I think it's awkward because then, you know, it comes across as, you know, we're being Grinches about, about the celebration. We only have one 50th anniversary, right? So, so I would, I would ask the council to consider maybe changing where that, that budget allocation is.
Can, can you email the link on this kiosk? And one of the things that I have on it, I was at, last week, we didn't go anywhere for Thanksgiving and we took the kids to the Napa Valley Marriott one night just so we could do something. And they had this, it was fun, and they had this huge screen in the lobby that's like this touchscreen, you can check out where the restaurants are and all that kind of stuff. The Daglawn thing didn't work, right? You're pushing on it and it's not working and now they got to call out some AV kind of, so I just, I don't know, that, I just look at that and go, okay, I know it sounds good, but, you know, there's other things to consider on that.
I have a different opinion than council member Hall and Vice Mayor on the kiosk. I do think it's a progressive way to, if you use technology and how we present what goes on here in town and what has gone on here in town, maybe it helped to having seen it live and the fact that you can run video, you can run photographs, you can tell stories that, you know, we've been talking for years about making the art walk more interactive with recordings that talk about the art, using mobile devices, incorporating those in people's experiences here in town. I hadn't even heard until this staff report that this was potentially a mobile option. First thought I thought was it's going to get pushed over and broken and, you know, the next thought was, well, that can be a lot more effective to have it be, you know, you can reprogram it to virtually any topic you want.
Can I ask a question about that? Who reprograms it? How often do they do it? For how long do we have to do this? And who's going to pay for it? Because it's going to come out of a budget in the future for someone to continue and maintain the device, period.
So we have analyzed some opportunities for the partners to use Channel 28 to put together their specific files if they need that. There's very easy information that you could do it from any Microsoft functioning computer you can generate it.
Who? Who does it? Does the town staff do it?
So the town staff would, would be responsible for our particular areas. The, the partners that come on, if they want a thing that someone can touch, they sign an agreement that they maintain it and it has to come to us in this format is the concept. And so the town's particular areas, we would have town staff that would be responsible for that.
So just to clarify, the, was it 16,000?
Yes.
Does that not include like?
Yes.
I'll call it production costs for whatever the content is or?
It includes production costs for the town's areas. We're looking at when the partners have to either produce it in-house or if they don't have the ability to do that, we give them the option of using Channel 28. And we have not floated that to the partners to date.
What do you mean use Channel 28?
So, well, Channel 28, excuse me, Channel 28 or James Raymond has the ability for them to, for him to, them to send him 25 pictures and some text and he will put together their kiosk file.
The Napa TV guys.
Napa TV guys. I'm sorry.
Sure. Well, okay. And so a year from now, what happens to this thing?
Well, I think there's a couple of things. One, the content may not need to change. We have control over how often you want to update it, the same type of thing would occur. So you're looking at the nominal cost. The 16,000 is the one-time, the electronics, the digital, the programming, because for example, one of the partners that we're thinking makes a lot of sense is the Veterans Home. They have a full-time PRO staff. They can put together their story, bring it in. The chamber can talk about current Yountville and things to do in Yountville. We may want to have, and I'm going to use this in a weird way because coming from the farther east, 50 years is a relatively drop in the bucket, but maybe we want to focus, as the mayor's been alluding to, what does it look like from 1965 current? Maybe we want to highlight our restaurant and wine history. So we take the content, we have a lot of that, we get it together and then it's put into the format. We can change that a year from now, two years from now to keep the device so that what we've paid the one-time money for can stay current and it's not a relic sitting in the, you know, sitting in a corner that we don't use. We can update it and change what we're telling the story and that's all I'm trying to say on that. But again, these are all options that you all, like I say, the challenge whenever we have an ad hoc working committee is they tend to get ahead of the others that are not involved in working on the committee. And that's a little bit of what we have in spite of our efforts to try to keep you apprised. We're ahead and I do tend to agree, I think the mayor has articulated, if you take the one element out, they've really done a pretty good job of trying to have a variety and stay within that budget. One item has blown the budget and it's a very unique item with a historical artifact that is significant to Yountville. But it could have been done outside of this budget, still can be if that's your choice.
I, from what I'm hearing, there are at least two council members concerned about the kiosk. I would, I would potentially remove that from this presentation if you're looking for approval on all the other items. It sounds to me like we need to pull out the White August Night Party and the kiosk for further discussion. That's the sense I'm getting from at least two of the members. I'm not sure how the council wants to consider the millstones, because I do think that's the, you know, clearly the highest impact on, on the budget as it stands. I think the kiosk has additional uses. It can be at the Welcome Center as well as at the Community Center Gallery for casual guests coming by. We can potentially have a sponsorship, partnership with the Welcome Center to populate that with membership, you know, chamber member information on it. I do think that that's where you'd see the most turnover and people coming by. The residents will all be curious for a while and will check it out and we've seen it and unless the content changes, we're not going to go back to it. and unless the content changes, we're not gonna go back to it.
I think that's a very good point, because, I mean, that was one of Cindy's goals, that was to have one of those, like ticker tapes going in the window when the chamber was closed. People do still come by, it's not always open, so.
I'm not sure I'm ready to go there.
Well, I'm not, yeah, I'm not saying put a ticker tape up, but, you know, I think, you know, if that's your, you know, to send us back and explore that, you know, maybe we could work on, is that, so is that what you're saying about that, partner that with the chamber?
Well, I think, I think, there's, you're hearing concern about the cost of the big party and the cost of the kiosk, and the effectiveness of the kiosk. I think we just need to vet those a little bit more, so there can be comfort that we're talking about two big ticket items that we're being asked to fund, and there's at least split feelings about whether we should put that kind of money into it, so.
Well, I think in terms of the, and Maria can certainly talk to this too, but the White August Nights, this is not a council policy, a legislative action, or anything like that, so I think the best thing is that this, maybe she could have one-on-ones with the three of you to kind of talk about that, because.
Do that, with the three of us. That's the, that's where we.
One-on-one?
That's where we get handcuffed, it does, once you've talked to three of us.
Yeah, because we're approving funds.
Effectively made a meeting. And that's where we run into a problem. People may not understand why this is difficult, that why haven't we seen this before? Because we can't talk about these things that are budget items.
Can we talk to Samantha?
Ahead of time.
Well, isn't that just a convoluted way of doing the same thing?
Well, it's not convoluted, it's, it's a legal requirement.
No, you know, he said, the three of you talk to Samantha.
So, we're gonna get our legal opinion.
What I might, well, to have that kind of conversation would concern me, because you're, you're building a, possibly a consensus to leading up to a decision. Sorry. You're leading up, you're, you're conducting serial meetings to build, possibly building up to a consensus on expenditure of the funds. There's nothing that would prohibit, and I'm not sure if the town manager is aware of all the elements of the, whoever is, could put together a memorandum and distribute it to the council. And that would get the information to the council.
So, the problem, the problem there is, once you. The Vice Mayor just suggested, if Samantha knows the specifics, do you know the specifics? Can we talk to you?
Yes.
There we go. We don't need to talk to the ad hoc committee.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is the cost impacted by the secret surprise?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So, it's on the three of us to reach out to Samantha to get the details, and we'll pinky swear.
Okay.
Without asking the council, what they think of the.
I will not ask for feedback, I will just give you specific information, and maybe a cup of coffee.
So, we, we need to pull that item from any approval tonight, and, like I said, I think we need to pull the kiosk from this approval, if we're giving it tonight.
And you don't have to technically move forward. The approval was for a budget adjustment. If you, I've, I've gathered your feedback, you're comfortable with everything but the kiosk and the White August Night event, which you need more information on before moving forward. Taking those two items out brings your budget below $50,000, so.
But I wanna caution you, it only brings you below until you decide what you're doing with them, because if you bring them back, you're gonna have to appropriate.
So, the only other question is, if the council wants to reposition the millstone expense, either in part or in whole, to another budget item. If not, if the council feels like this is where it belongs, then we need to work within the parameters of that.
And that would most likely result in a budget adjustment somewhere else, just floating that out there, because we haven't budgeted for that project anywhere. We have a small amount of town manager contingency, but that will not cover this.
And, the last, the last time we had the, the discussion on this, remember, we, in that staff report, we're planning on putting some kind of a simple lean-to over the top next year, so, just to remind everybody to generally protect it from the elements.
So, I'll say this.
Yes.
In Sacramento yesterday, watched them do this little shell game, where they didn't actually have to vote for their salaries, they substituted a vote from a different bill and all that kind of stuff, which is silly and ridiculous. I think the millstone is fine, if we had put it in our budget for the whole year, we wouldn't be talking about it. Putting it in some other budget is silly, and I don't think it's necessary. The details of this, I think, should be discussed, so, I, I don't think the kiosk makes sense, but I'll, I'll, I'll vote, I would right now vote for the budget adjustment, because you guys have seen it, you think it makes sense, that's fine, the details of saying whether we'll move forward with this event, I have a feeling you're gonna make us feel good if we happen to ask what's going on. I'm happy to move forward with the resolution.
Samantha, is there any negative to, to continuing this item to January 6th in whole?
Yes, I'm gonna say yes, because we have events that we need to know if we're moving forward with. February is getting close.
Okay, so the answer's yes.
Because we can't keep operating out of the budget without knowing that.
Okay, does the council want to take action on approving the budget adjustment? I mean, I'm, I'm welcome to a motion, a budget adjustment for all items except for the kiosk and the White August Nights at this time.
We really wouldn't need a budget adjustment, then, if you pulled those two items out or under the original budget, so.
Except for the fact that when these two other items come back, we will need a budget adjustment.
Right.
So then, that's when the actual.
So, would you, you're approving the budget adjustment, but you're not approving these two projects at this point? Is that what you're saying?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. I'm confused.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 3219-14, approving a budget adjustment number 2014-15-01, increasing general fund appropriations by $30,000 for community promotion. 50th anniversary celebration, approving the proposed projects and events in celebration of the town's 50th anniversary. I will make no amendment to that motion. The one thing I'm gonna say is, on the side, I'm gonna be interested in hearing that and expect that there will be dialogue on the side, but I'll make the motion as it stands.
I'll second.
I'm gonna make a substitute motion that we approve all items except for the White August Night and the kiosk at this time, which would not require any budget action at all, at this time.
It would really just be feedback that we were requesting, because the action item is the budget adjustment, so.
So, I guess I can't give a substitute motion that's under the budget allocation then?
Right.
Okay, never mind.
I, I.
So, discussion on the, there's a motion and a second, discussion about that motion? Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I think that there is a, a lot of things that we want to do here, and I really want, you know, all of us to be very, you know, supportive and know what they all are, and really kind of know where we're going and be on the same page. It seems like we just need a little more information on a couple items, and I think we've kind of worked out some mechanisms to get you that information, and if, but, is there anything in the White August Nights that needs a decision before January, in terms of a budget? I just don't know that. Probably?
You still have $50,000, so you could still, in the short term, you still have $50,000.
In the short term, you can still say, I mean, we haven't approved the project list.
Right.
But as long as you're not committing to something that you can't get money back.
No, we're not.
Because, you know, like, not like the play, we're still going through a lot of discussion, you know, I'm.
Are you okay with that?
Willing to pull that, maybe get you your deposit.
Although, let's have one person talk at a time.
Waiting till January?
Yes.
I don't, I, I think the two things that you have specific apprehension to, I do not mind waiting till January. The other items that you have shown support for are coming up sooner, and we're, need to be moving those pieces, but these particular items, I would not think waiting till the first meeting in January is gonna be detrimental.
I withdraw my motion, and I support the mayor's direction to staff.
So, what we can do tonight without any action is approve, you've, you're getting guidance to move forward with everything under $50,000 listed here, knowing that there are the two items that we will need a future budget adjustment.
Right. So, what, what I'm understanding is, in between now and the January meeting, we'll all, we'll have a discussion, and I can try to answer any questions that you might have between me and any of the council members that may have questions. And then we will come back in January with the budget adjustment again, and you will approve or not approve.
Just two items at that point? It would be the two outstanding items that are not already within budget.
That will take a motion for you, if you wanna do that.
January.
Well, I mean, I, I'm gonna suggest, one, you have a council ad hoc committee, so it's really important that you provide direction to the council ad hoc committee, so that they know what they're doing. From a staff perspective, if you want us to bring back everything but the two items.
No, it's not, that's not what we're saying, we're saying the exact opposite. We're saying that you, you can move forward, the ad hoc committee can move forward with staff, on all the items that don't put it over the $50,000 pre-approved, so there's no budget adjustment necessary until January 6th, when we revisit the kiosk and the party. And if we approve those two, that will require a budget adjustment.
I make, can I make a motion?
Hold on, Town Attorney has something first.
Quick suggestion. I was gonna continue. A quick suggestion, to make a motion to continue this item to the January 6th meeting to, you could take, because part of the resolution is to achieve or to, really, to achieve the full list of projects as presented, so you are giving direction to move forward on the full list of projects as presented, with the exception of the kiosk and the White August Night event, and just continue this matter.
And that's why I'm.
I make that motion.
For clarification, because that is what we can do, because what we enter into.
Motion I tried to make earlier.
Because it's gonna come back on your table on January 6th.
I second.
Okay, wait.
So, the motion, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor made a motion to continue this item to January 6th. Councilmember Hall seconded that motion. By not acting on this now, the ad hoc committee and the staff still have the ability to move forward on the individual items within the budget that are timely.
I want it.
We provide, we're providing direction.
We have given that direction already.
I'm understanding.
We support all of the other items as listed.
So, I just wanna be, what we're really going to be bringing back is the kiosk and further explanation on the big free event. I just want to make really clear, because when we move forward and enter into agreements and book things, those are the two items.
That is what the council has.
We've got that.
Given support for already, and it does not require budget action tonight on that. It'll only require it on the two items that would put it over the budget. So, there's a motion and a second, is there further discussion? Anything else?
I have just another discussion item, so when we, the kiosk comes back, is there additional information that you think you need?
I think Councilmember Hall and the Vice Mayor have the most concern about the kiosk, and they can get that information from Samantha.
Okay.
We could do a demo.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, there's a motion and a second, is there any further discussion about the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed to the motion?
I abstain.
Okay, one abstention. So, we will continue the item, the budget adjustment portion of the item to January 6th. The items that fall within the budget, as you've received support from the council, can move forward. Alrighty, that was easy.
Thank you for your feedback.
Two million dollars extra we have in the.
So, Item 17B, Fiscal Year End Financial Report 2014-15.
Yes.
And just for clarification, we have been given, and I'm sure it's everywhere it needs to be, new language for the resolution.
Yes. So, upon detailed review of the applicable accounting standards and discussion with the town's auditor, staff has made some additional entries to the books, since this report was created and sent out to you all. And it's related to the current status of litigation, and so the revised resolution has been provided to council, and copies are available for the public. The adjustments were related to $440,000 in settlement funds received in August 2014, and then the arbitrator's determination in October that the town will need to pay $560,000 out of pocket, and that's a $787,000 award, less the $227,000 that's currently held in an escrow retention account. So, given that the information's known to the town before we issue the CAFR, and that the initial event that created this, these transactions occurred last fiscal year, those, the governmental accounting standards require that the town record those amounts in 2013-14. So, with that introduction, that's what created the revised resolution, which I'll get to, but first I'd like to just kind of go through some of the highlights of the report and where we're at, at the end of the fiscal year. So, starting with a quick summary overview of general fund. Our revenue trends were very positive. Included in our total $11.2 million in the general fund revenue is the $1.2 million of one-time settlement funds received, so, but with that, we had some really good trends in our property taxes, our sales tax, and of course, our TOT. So, property tax, based on increase in assessed value of about 5.4% over prior year, resulted in about a $40,000 increase in revenue. Our sales tax totaled $1.26 million, and that was a 15.9% increase from 2012-2013, and sales tax now exceeds property taxes on our revenue trends. And TOT, I just continue, it continues to amaze me, to be honest with you. What we saw was $6.26 million in TOT, and that's a $623,000 increase, or 11% higher than 2012-13. We initially budgeted TOT conservatively, and we adjusted it mid-year, we, we adjusted it to 5.8. I just don't, I couldn't have projected that 6.2 million. I know every year we say we've reached a plateau, but I, I really think we're close. We really have this time. I think we really have this time. I think future increases will be minimal, but we do see the trends are positive. The occupancy rate for last year was 79%, compared with 76% overall the year before, and average room rates increased to $394 for the year, compared to $368 the year before. Yeah, it's, it's pretty amazing. So, people love to come here, and they love to stay here, and they love to eat our food and drink our wine, and we welcome them. License and permits, while a small part of the budget, for sure, but we did have an active year with building permit activity, including construction of rider homes and permits issued for Stewart sellers. Rents and concessions, one of the big ticket items there is our rent that we collect for the post office on government buildings, but overall rents and concessions, $244,000 in revenue. Parks and recreation fees, big shout-out to Sam and her team, because their programs are real popular, and they've grown over the years, and her, her revenue increased by 11% and was $40,000 higher than 2012-13, for a total of $358,000. Again, miscellaneous revenues includes the $1.2 million that we received in litigation settlement, and then we'll also be booking the additional $440,000 to that, to close out the year. As far as expenses, overall, we were under budget by $267,000 in the general fund, so that's a very positive trend. We did have a few areas where we were a little over, but we had many areas where we were under, and really no concerns there. We had transfers out of general fund for, primarily for capital projects, $1.25 million, and then also for our debt service payments on our lease revenue bonds, so total transfers out of $2.19 million for those activities. So, that gets us to where we're at on the bottom line on our fund balance, and we do have our, be, prior to closing out the year and seeing where we're at, we have funded all of our allocations in accordance with our policies, our emergency reserve, we have 20% of our budgeted expenditures, and then we have our $50,000 for claims retention, a small amount for OPEB that will go to the trust with the payment for the year. We have a sign for revenue stabilization, so what we're recommending is, at the end of the day, we have $2,029,400 in unassigned fund balance, because of this positive activity in the revenue and the one-time monies that we received. So, staff is making a recommendation for allocating that $2,029,000, and our list includes capital projects fund, to put $779,400 there to continue funding our infrastructure. Increase the revenue stabilization by an additional $250,000, because we know TOT and sales tax are growing, but we also know, and we're so dependent on. because we know TOT and sales tax are growing, but we also know when we're so dependent on tourism revenue, we can be victims of the economy if it should decline. So that's just a bucket of funds that could help us out if times got tough. We have $350,000 we'd like to allocate to kind of a budget contingency or a general contingency. And that would bring that contingency up to $500,000. And that's an area where it wouldn't be spent unless council approved, but it would be a place that could, that council could allocate from if unanticipated expenditures came up during the year. Then we're also recommending an additional $150,000 for legal contingency. And even with the adjustments that are still to be made, that would leave our legal contingency at the end of the close at $580,000. So those would be funds that would be available should the town need to pay out any additional settlements. And then we're recommending an additional $500,000 to our emergency reserve. And that is a little more restricted, because that does require council to declare an emergency as spelled out in our municipal code. But that would bring the emergency reserve to $1,954,000, or about 27% of expenditures. So I'm sure we'll have discussion about that, but I'm just going to keep going through the highlights in the report. The capital projects fund was very active last year. We had some major projects that we did. And we spent $2.6 million to complete the town hall seismic retrofit. And that was spending down the remaining bond proceeds from the 2013 lease revenue bonds. We invested in the GIS system, which you saw demonstration of earlier this evening. We did some security systems to town facilities. We did planning and permitting in progress for the Hopper Creek Improvement Project, which is another big project coming up later this year. And we completed the Madison and Yount Street resurfacing. And all told, $4.65 million expended out of the capital projects fund for the year. So very active year on projects. And that leaves approximately $2.68 million in the capital projects fund at the end of the year. Our utility enterprises, the Water Enterprise Fund had revenues of 1.2 million and total expenses for operations of $889,000. So that left a net income of $327,000. And while that's income, I want to stress, it's not profit per se, because we have obligations for loans that need to be repaid. And we can also use that funding to build up reserves for capital projects moving forward. Because the Water Capital Projects Fund has not been too active. So putting money aside for future projects and infrastructure replacement is very important. We're also getting a system replacement fee that is directly dedicated toward capital replacements. And that generated $58,400 for the year. But we know that's not going to be enough for all the projects coming into the future. So that's why that operating income is important as well. We still have one outs, one major outstanding loan from the Water Fund, and it's to the Capital Projects Fund for the municipal well project. But we did do kind of an extra payment accelerated schedule on that. So that balance is down to $93,875. And it looks like we'll be able to pay that off pretty quickly in the current year with the funds available. The Wastewater Enterprise Fund generated revenues for the year of 1.69 million, expenses of 1.279 million, for a net income of $360,000. The Wastewater Operating Fund did have a pretty aggressive capital projects for the year, spending $449,000 of Madison, toward the Madison and Yount sewer main. And that was done by an advance from the bond proceeds that will be paid back over the life of the bonds. And then additionally, $643,000 was spent on the recycled water expansion project, which is going to be completed this fiscal year. Also of note, the State Department of Veterans Affairs paid the town their share of the recycled water project, $1.6 million, and they paid that all upfront in June 2014. Yes, they did. So that was a, a very good thing for cash flow for the town. And the way the Veterans Home or State Department of Veterans Affairs, the way they fund capital projects now has changed after their internal audit, that that comes from the state and the legislature has to approve those expenses. So when they are a partner of participation in a particular project, there's just a different process than how they pay for their operating costs for treatment. And the state revolving loan for the recycled water project, the good news is, because we got in the full amount from the State Department of Veterans Affairs, we won't have to draw down as much for the loan, we won't have to borrow as much money. And that's good news for ratepayers. And we were able to put aside the required debt service reserve of $212,000 for the year to show that we're compliant with that. So as we finish that project coming up, we'll finalize the debt service schedule on that and begin making those payments probably later this fiscal year. That's really a summary of my report. And the revised resolution does include the allocations recommended by staff, which of course you are free to amend and change. And it also includes an appropriations increase for the litigation settlement costs, so that those can be booked into our records. And we can show that council was aware, approved the budget, and make sure that the numbers are accurate for publishing our financial statements and completing our CAFR.
So item six is the only change to the resolution.
Yes, that's correct.
Vice Mayor?
Can, can you expand a little bit upon item six? Because it's not an item within the $2,29,400 allocation. So it's not as if we're taking assigned fund balance and putting more into that item. This is a, this is a fiscal year.
Yes.
Last year.
Yes, it's booking it back to June 30th. And what, because what we need to do, we haven't paid out any money yet, but we have an obligation. So we need to show that obligation on our books at June 30. And to do so, would be prudent to adjust the budget.
We're adjusting last year's budget.
That's correct.
What's item six? I'm lost.
It's on this.
The new resolution.
On the revised resolution, I apologize.
So I guess, sorry, if I could just ask a follow-up question very quickly, that.
Yes.
Those costs were incurred prior to June 30?
No, the arbitrator's ruling was in October. However, the governmental accounting standards dictate that since we know of the event and we have incurred the liability and the transactions that caused the liability incur happened last fiscal year in 13-14.
Now, now I got it.
Yes, thank you, it's a subsequent event.
That doesn't help me, that's.
Sorry.
So her explanation did, yours did not.
It's good enough, I just continue the issue.
Other questions?
I have some comments, but.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the report. That's again, amazing to see how we were fortunate enough to land on this side of the, this side of the balance sheet. Couple, just a quick comment, and I know my colleagues here might, might agree, or maybe they won't. But I like, with regards to the general fund revenue analysis, you know, you show that when we have better revenue than we budgeted, the numbers are positive, meaning that they're not in brackets. And that when they're negative or bad, they're in brackets. However, on the expense, general expense summary, you do the opposite. You show good numbers as negative numbers. I would just add.
Because we're under.
Yeah, but I would just.
I'm sorry.
Usually when I see a negative anywhere on a financial statement, it's a bad thing.
I know, but, okay. I mean, I can change that.
I'm perfectly capable of it, I don't know if it helps anybody else. It's a, as a better/worse calculation versus a variance calculation. Are you better or worse than your budget?
Right. And that's really what I'm trying to say.
Just this has the net difference. So for purposes of, I mean, I can read through the math, I get that. I do have another comment and question. So let me ask you a little bit about the proposed allocation of general fund assigned balance.
Yes.
So if we take and made these allocations as presented, liquidity associated with capital projects fund, there is a policy around, or we actually have to assign a project to be able to access those funds, or surrendering that capital projects fund, is that correct?
That's true.
Okay. Revenue stabilization fund is technically a reserve.
That's true.
Okay. Contingency, what is the minimum requirement for being able to access funds that are set aside in contingency?
That's up to you all as a policymaking committee. I mean, we wouldn't dig into the contingency unless it was approved by the council.
Okay. And my last question is, on the emergency reserve, and I'm sorry if I'm being dense here. But it would be my opinion, given that declaring an emergency would be something that I think we have stipulated specifically as to what qualifies as an emergency.
Yes.
Getting us to a 27% or almost one-third of our planned expenditures in a year seems a little excessive to me. Although I don't necessarily have a home for all these additional funds. I think we will certainly have one, based on prior conversations. That said, I, I would just like to point out that with the revenue stabilization fund, which one I'm very fond of, by putting this quarter million dollars in there, you get basically to a million dollars as a revenue stabilization number each year as presented. And that's very significant, given the amount that we rely upon the TOT in this community. So those are my quick questions slash comments. I do have a question of whether or not the legal contingency number is sufficient or not, but I think that will come up in further discussion.
Yeah, Vice Mayor?
That leads me to my question. I just, I don't think that, I didn't have the time to get my head around item six that's added to the resolution, the 2014 budget adjustment, last year's budget adjustment on item six.
Yes.
You know what I'm talking about? You're looking at me like you don't.
Yes.
Okay, sorry. After we pass this or some form of this, but let's say we pass the recommendation, which has item four, which is assigning for a legal contingency. In the staff report, it says that we, the current balance assigned for legal contingencies is 550. That would take us up to 700. Is that exclusive of line six?
Actually, the, the new revised balance with the adjustments that I need to post would be $580,000 in the legal contingency, if you approve this additional.
Not 700.
Not 700.
Okay, so, but, but it would be five?
Eighty.
Five eighty.
Yes.
So we've already in 2014 accounted for 560. And in case there's an additional 580, that money is sitting there.
Yes.
On top of that.
Yes. Five, 580 total balance, if you approve the additional 150 that we're recommending.
I understand, thank you.
Okay.
Is there clarity on the entire council about that point?
So I think that answers a bit of your question.
That answers my question.
Let's have that reviewed one more time, just focus on the legal portion. How much do we have? How much more are we allocating?
And I would repeat, no more than what you just gave us, but I would repeat everything you just gave us.
Okay. So, okay. The current balance is 550,000 in the legal contingency. And then with the adjustments that I still need to make, and if you approve the 150,000 allocation, it'll bring it to 580,000.
Ignore the 700, because we are required to do item six on the new resolution, and that impacts the 700.
Okay, I'm looking at items one through six here. I got number four, it's not changing. Is that correct?
As of right now, that's staff's recommendation.
Yeah.
Okay, and number six is not changing.
That is a, six is different than all the other five. Six is a cleanup of last year's budget.
Right.
It's a requirement for reporting.
Right, okay.
Because we know, we know it occurred.
Okay.
If I could, I'd like to address, I think where Councilmember Hall started a little bit of a dialogue on some of the uses of, of the various funds.
Can, can I make a comment before you go down that road? Because you might as well react to what I'm going to say at the same time. Is that okay?
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I did the math on these different reserves. And let me just state, first of all, find me another government agency that doesn't, doesn't go out and spend the money. So I think it's fantastic that we're reserving it. On the flip side, we now, if we approve your recommendation, have essentially reserved in emergency reserves, contingencies, budget stabilization, 45% of our general fund budget on a yearly basis. And I think, I mean, I don't want to spend it, but I, I do think that's excessive. And I would rather see that, I would rather see that go to, say, capital projects. And as, as Councilmember Hall pointed out, the, the burden of, not only the legal burden, which isn't really that big of a deal, we can just call it an emergency, but I think the political burden of accessing that fund is high, which is nice, but we've got 20% for that. I would rather see that either in a more flexible fund, or personally, I would rather see it all in special projects. That's where we get our capital monies, that, all this stuff that we do in town and our streets, and that's, that's where that money comes from.
And that is a good segue to what I was about to try to outline for you. Let's start, the budget contingency is your first spot that you would go to on an annual basis. So if we needed, an unexpected expense occurred, something went over, that's the first place we go.
That's right.
Second, and I do think this is, this is good for you all, because I think this conversation, then we would look at, the revenue stabilization is the most flexible of your reserves, if you want to look at it. So if you want to put more in that category, I don't think that's a bad idea, because that does give you a little bit more flexibility. Legal contingency is exactly that. It's intended, in some cases, we were banking some money to provide for in case there was an outcome. And then it will drop down to a more normal month, which would be 150,000. So that again, in, you know, we don't have a lot of legal activity. Some organizations, you know, have a fair amount of in and out. So the thought that staff has is to provide you with a little bit of buffer. But I think if you wanted to look at that, you know, the amount going to, committed for emergency reserve, you are correct. That is the most restrictive pool that you have in terms of what this council or future council will be able to do. Certainly, there's more flexibility with capital projects fund. The other thing that I am really pleased to be able to report is, you know, six, eight years ago, the capital projects fund was also paying for all of the utility enterprise projects. So we've shifted, a big paradigm shift, with the ratepayers are needing to pay for the appropriating. We are building up those appropriate capital projects. So, but I mean, that's why we, we do say it with all earnest. This is a good discussion point, and you are correct. We're very, we do want to try to make sure that we do a, a good stewardship of this money, but we don't take any deference if you decide that you want to move, put a little more money in revenue stabilization, so it's more flexible. Or if you want to move a little bit more money into capital projects fund or address the legal contingency, that's why it's here to start your dialogue.
I'm going to chime in on, on this as well. I would remove number five in its entirety. I would not add additional to the emergency reserve. We are at 20% already, and it being the most restrictive, I would, I resist handcuffing the council's ability to allocate revenues as we need to going forward. I would take that 500 and put 300 of it in the legal contingency and 200 of it in the budget contingency. I think the budget contingency is the most flexible, and that allows us to do as much as we need to. It can be moved into any of these other funds or for other expenses as necessary. But I think that we need to add to that legal contingency, and then I would put the rest in budget just for flexibility.
So I have a question. So how much, if we did that, what is in our emergency reserve? Let me go back.
It's at 20% of the general fund right now, at 1.454 million dollars.
Yeah, I just want to make a, a comment. I'm not, I think I'm okay with that, but I, I just wanted to make a, a policy. but I just wanted to make a policy statement about our emergency reserves. I mean, this is something that, you know, I saw NAPA put a lot of money into a lot of reserves. In the big downturn in '08, '09, and into '10, they went through almost all of it. Then, a few years later, the big earthquake hit. These are the things that I really worry about, and I'm okay with 20% now, but I'm going to keep arguing to bump that up. These are the things that, you know, something really big happens, a million bucks doesn't go very far, I know it's 20%, but we have a small budget, and a million bucks doesn't go very far at all, we all know what our houses cost, so.
And I would argue, in different circumstances, I would feel differently, but priorities as they are, I think
That's why I said, this year, I'm okay with it. I'm okay with it now, but it's not, something going forward, I think I'm going to make, given, who knows where our situation's going to be, but I'm going to continue to argue for emergency reserves higher than 20%.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes, I think I completely support fiscal responsibility and the revenue stabilization fund, and the capital projects fund, and the legal contingency fund. But I think that we have heard constituents complain to us that we hardly ever do anything for them, and I think that $17,000 out of the 2 million that we have in surplus funds to put on a special party for their 50th anniversary of becoming a town, I think that, you know, should weigh in somewhere on this list. And if it means that because we put 200 in the budget contingency fund and we can access that, then I can live with that. But I really feel like we need to not only be fiscally conservative, but we should be aware of special occasions and special things we can do for our residents.
All the more support for the idea that I presented, which is the budget contingency is the most flexible place to have funds available, it could be used for
The millstones, and that's right, and also for supplementing that budget.
You're going to generate significant sponsorship revenue that will offset all the costs of all your events, so it won't be a problem.
Absolutely. That's right.
I support what the mayor proposed, and as you were saying, Councilmember Mueller, like I said before, I wouldn't support spending it, I think we should put it aside. And if, you know, if we have another earthquake that we had serious damage here, we've got 2.6 million dollars in our special projects fund to access, all of these funds to access, I agree, I mean, I in principle agree with what you're saying, even if I don't think it should be in that specific fund.
Okay.
I'm going to make a motion that we we adopt resolution 3220-14 with the, as presented for items one and two, we change item three, budget contingency, to a total of 550,000. We change item four, legal contingency, to a total of 450,000, and we eliminate item five committed to for emergency reserve.
Second.
Any further discussion? I want to make sure that's clear to staff, is that clear?
I've got it.
It adds up right?
Yes.
Because I did the addition, and I want to make sure you look at that.
Check it, Richard, check it.
We got it.
All right.
I think he's all right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, thank you. So, let's move ahead to item 18. Meeting reports. NCTPA, actually, I'm going to first go to the City Select Committee met prior to the Napa flood control, and the only reason that that is, well, the reason it's important that we know this is, the City Select Committee is the five mayors, and we make recommendations for vacancy on the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. And since Supervisor Dodd is now Assemblymember Dodd, he was the representative on MTC, the City Select Committee nominated Supervisors Luce and Caldwell, and Napa City Councilmember Pedrosa as three candidates that then are given to the Board of Supervisors to assign. Right now, they're going to only fill the unexpired term, which goes between now and February of 2015. The City Select Committee will be reconvening in its January meeting to reconsider three names to present to the supervisors for consideration for the full four-year MTC term that starts in February. The reason that we didn't just do both of those together is we felt like there wasn't an understanding of the vacancy and the need to kind of make your interest known. So, we first started with those three names, and we may stay with those three names in January, we may also change those. So, anyone that's looking to, and it doesn't have to be a supervisor, it can be a council member. It happens to have been Bill Dodd for the last four or five, I think it was 10 years, something like that. And it's been a county supervisor for 20 years, but it does not have to be, so.
All the more reason to change.
If others are interested, they should be applying to the county clerk to seek an application for that. So, that was the city selection. The flood control, the biggest thing we did was approve the 2015 budget, or calendar, so that wasn't very significant. Any other meetings? I know it's been kind of a light meeting time, so if we don't have any other reports, we can move on to adjournment, to our, we will not be meeting again in December. We will be meeting again in January 6th of 2015.
Mr. Mayor, prior to adjournment, I do want to, you usually cover this, so I want to put a little bug out and remind everybody that on Thursday, December 11th, will be the community Christmas tree lighting, Santa art reception, the news. I mean, it's a neat night to come out and celebrate all things, and chamber mixer.
5:30 at the Community Center.
Our community tree lighting, art reception, chamber mixer on Thursday, December 11th.
And we also have breakfast with Santa on
13th?
13th at 8?
It starts at 8:30.
30.
Goes till 11.
8:30 to 11 at Community Hall?
Community Hall, yes.
And singer, senior bingo?
Senior bingo is Tuesday, the 9th, at 2 o'clock. That's always a fun time, if you want to come, I'm calling the bingo, I'm happy to have a guest. And we also have, on December 6th is Winter Wonderland, the arts and gift fair. And then that evening, we have a free concert for the community, a holiday concert with the San Alina Community Band at the Community Center.
Free events.
Free events. Free all over the place.
Residents.
More free stuffs.
Yeah.
Okay, I know, I was skipping right over all those announcements. Do we have any other announcements? I would say, I would like to commend the Chamber of Commerce and all the volunteers that made for a very successful festival of lights. I do want to say, Executive Director Saucerman cut the timing a little tight with the weather, because the event ended at 6:00 and it rained at 6:02. But it did wait until the event was complete and the lights were on, so that went well. I tell you, whoever Santa is, he's an impressive individual this early in his very busy month. That guy's magical. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to our January 6th, 2015 meeting.
So moved.
Councilmember Mueller, and seconded by Councilmember Dornbecker. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you, staff, see you next year.